I'm tired and I forgot what number we were on, but I'm going to guess this was about the 18th rendition of this document. But I do want to thank Bob Getheart and his pond group in Pelican Preserve, Severn Trent, Molly, CDD staff Scott and L., Danny and Tetra Tech for what a lot of people worked on this a long time before our committee got involved in it. And truthfully, our committee pretty much looked at what we felt was the big item in that report, and that was this entire issue of water quality and littorals. And I personally want to thank, some of my members are here today. We had a lot of meetings. People got educated pretty quick. We did a lot of reading, a lot of research, a lot of editing. We didn't always agree on everything, but I think in the end, we've got a document that's a place to start. This is a work in progress. This is a work in progress. The, as you saw in the report, there's an exhibit that's attached, that's not attached and not filled in, and it's a key part of this as far as I'm concerned, and that is retaining, I believe you're going to have a discussion about this later on, getting an outside vendor to come in and once and for all, and it's amazing that we don't have it. But we need a delineation of what the 59 ponds that we're dealing with, and I'm not counting the 10 in Hampton Park that are still under the developer. But the other 59s ponds that are here in the community, I pull my hair out looking for, and if you've got the patience, then you've got more than I've got to deal with the Lee County website in trying to find out what the development orders say in this community for each of our ponds. I believe that we should have that in a file here to begin with, but it doesn't seem to exist. I don't even know if it ever existed. But the issue is, we need to know what that document is, not only for what the existing development orders say, or what the development orders say about littorals that were to be in existence when this place started, as opposed to what the development orders say to some of the communities that are within Gateway that, as best we can tell, are silent on littorals. Again, I said this to you earlier in the week, I'm not going to sit here and read every word, I'm going to try to hit the highlights and then get to questions. Again, we worked with Pelican Preserve, Bob and his people, they've looked at it, and I believe, and I'm not going to put words in their mouth, but I believe we are, we have an understanding that this document is in a position ready for your review and hopefully approval later this evening. There are some differences. There are some differences in this. Issue one is methodology of management, and I'm not going to get into that into real detail, but that is a little bit of a difference of how Pelican Preserve works and how we do. A second item that I'm going to talk quite extensively about is that we're a little different than Pelican Preserve. One, they're a mile ahead of us, and it sounds like at least $600,000, Bob, ahead of us, in the bank already to discuss this issue. But they're a younger group, younger community than we are, and so a lot of the issues that we have, dealing with old documents and old development orders, they simply don't have. And so consequently, their issues relative to determination of what ponds need, what ponds don't need, is a little bit different. We don't have anything here really to go by. And to me and our committee, the thing that appeared to us to be the most important thing was the basis going forward is, one, based upon the development order, which we put right in the first paragraph with an asterisk, "For the avoidance of any doubt, any rights vested in permit development orders prevail over the above Lee County Section 10418 requirements unless major changes are made to the existing water body." That's the premise of how we're proceeding. But the issue is, water quality comes into play on some of these, especially those ponds that do not have littorals. What we have set up is a water quality testing program where we start on each of the five basins, and it's identified here in the report. We take the five basins, basin one being the pond or the weir over Interstate 75, basin two being the first weir in Pelican Preserve on the east side of Treeline, basin three being the weir further upstream in Pelican Preserve that partially serves Pelican Preserve and partially serves Gateway. Basin four is the weir by the 16th hole on the golf course back in Cypress Links, and weir five being basin five, which is the weir at Gateway Greens. There is a sixth one that we identified, we put in, Bob, I don't know if you had it on the version, but we wanted to account for Pelican Preserve. They do have a sixth basin, and it's essentially, it's the road that
The north end.
That's your north end of your property that goes up and around behind the grocery store and the commercial area as you're coming in off of Colonial on the right. That goes through a series of lakes to Lake Number One, I believe, and then Lake One has a discharge over into the Colonial system, and that network feeds down through Colonial and finds its way into the six-mile Cypress. So our basis in Gateway that we're proposing is that we do a series of testing, and we have been doing that since June, to check water quality. If that water quality shows a negative reading, and what we're using, and I shouldn't say negative, a poor reading, what we're using and following is the TSI, the Tropic State Index, as developed by Lee County Hyacinth Control, on trying to give us a picture of the water quality that's in our ponds and in our pond network. If that index, which is divided into three components, good, fair and poor, anything being 70 or greater is being poor, and if you read the literature, sometimes poor to a fisherman is better, because it's better for the fishing, but for a pure water quality, aesthetic and everything combined, that appears to be the best methodology to use, is the Tropic State Index. The county uses it. So if we have any reading, what we're proposing, any reading that triggers a poor reading, two consecutive months in any basin, in Gateway, we're not going to be doing it in Pelican Preserve, but in Gateway, we'll then go to the basins or segments that are influenced to that basin. We take samples two more months on the basin, but also on this segment, trying to isolate where the problem is coming from that's creating the poor reading within the particular basin. So if basin four, for example, would have a poor reading, that's north of Gateway Greens Drive all the way up to the Cypress Links. One of the contributors to basin four would be the Mahogany Run, Callaway Greens area. That's a segment that comes in with two 54-inch diameter pipes. We'd test right there, along with two or three other ones that come into that same one, trying to find where's the problem that's causing the problem. If for two more months, we have consecutively poor readings, again, Tropic State Index, then we go into every pond that's in that sub-basin, and we test it for two months. What we're trying to do is to isolate it and find out what's causing the problem. Is it one pond? Is it two ponds? Or is it just happened to be that it happened once and it doesn't happen again? That's the basis of then going into determining what we need on as far as water quality improvements. So if we would have a pond, pick one, 67, that we would go back through the system and find essentially four consecutive months of poor reading, and it leads to pond 67, our recommendation is we would turn that over to the engineering and the biological people and go in and tell us, does that need aeration? Does that need dredging? Does that need cultural practices? Does that need littorals? What are the things that it needs to have to get its water quality up, to get us in a position that we can pass and be in either a good or a fair range? So that's the premise of how this thing works. Going on, top of page four, "For ponds with a development order that is silent on littoral plantings," this is critical, "for ponds with a development order that is silent on littoral plantings, the GSCDD may, at its discretion, remove littoral plants in areas where they are deemed to be causing aesthetic conflicts with residential and commercial users or their respective HOAs and POAs. In any event, is recognized that the GSCDD has the responsibility to maintain high water quality standards throughout the entire surface water retention system. Accordingly, the provisions of items one through nine below shall apply. In particular, item nine shall apply where a four consecutive water quality test results are rated as poor." That's the key, is what I was saying earlier. Let's go through these nine, because these are pretty much the critical items. One, planted littoral shelves shall be created and calculated, and this is critical, "and/or reduced and maintained to 25% of the total linear feet upon shoreline at the controlled elevation. The CDD shall work with the local and applicable HOA regarding the location of any littorals to be removed to meet the 25% littoral maximum requirement. Two, littoral should be planted at the rate of three plants based on one-foot centers horizontally along either the 4-1 or 6-1 slopes from the one-foot water depth below the control elevation out to a depth of two feet, thus creating a not-to-exceed four-to-eight-foot wide littoral shelf, or PLS. Regardless of the actual pond slopes, where appropriate, the PLS will be state to serve as a marker that the PLS shall not extend beyond." The reason I had to put that in there is we have come to find that we have some ponds here in the community that, for the most part, we thought were 4-1 and/or 6-1. Some of these things are like a 10-1, because a two-foot depth, you can go out 20, 25 feet. And so we've got to address this, and this is trying to avoid that deal that we're running into called littoral creep. Three, PLS may be divided around the pond such that the minimum zone area shall be 300 square feet. That's a little bit different from Lee County, they call out 1,000 square feet. What we're trying to do is to set this up on the basis that we have several communities, several communities in Gateway where the shoreline is 100% residential humps, particularly on this side of Griffin Drive all the way up to Magnolia Lakes, the older or the newer communities that were built around kind of a circular or a square lake. We wanted to be able to go in and divide those zones up to address where the water comes into a pond, let's say off of a street inlet, where the water goes out to the next pond to try to cleanse it, filter it before it goes out, in corners that we know have been problems, and then the other places where a lot of times, we had this sheet flow runoff between two houses for whatever reason, poor landscaping, but those areas where the littorals in the future could help protect on that erosion possibility. Four, whenever possible, the PLS must be located away from residential and commercial lodges to avoid maintenance and aesthetic conflicts with residential and commercial users. Wetlands, golf courses and non-residential commercial shorelines shall be used whenever possible to meet the minimum PLS requirements. Five, littoral shall not block any controlled structures, inlets, so as to prevent flow of water. That's critical, common sense. Six, littoral plants shall include the following, and I've given a list, and this is purely based upon recommendations L., Molly and Ernesto de la Vega at Lee County. All plants shall be in two-inch minimum containers. Bacopa, number seven, bacopa should be used exclusively from the control elevation down to one foot below the control elevation as a ground cover during the dry season, especially on residential and commercial shorelines. Bacopa is a sort of like a Bermuda, only it's a leafy plant. It's not considered a littoral, but it's like a ground cover, and it leaves an appearance of something better than the brown, old, mucky dirt that when our water levels recede. And a good place that where they've been using it effectively is over at Heritage Pond. Eight, and this gets into some of the problems that we've got that are logistic issues, "where littoral-eating fish cannot be effectively removed, the PLS shall be state and protected with appropriate fencing." We've had that recommended by several places that that's how they get around that fish issue, because removing or ridding some of these fish that we've got, in my opinion, and based on what I've heard and talked to Fish and Wildlife, this is going to be a challenge, especially in our major flowway from basin one all the way back up to the tail end of basin five. We've got a massive number of fish. What we might be having to look at, and I'm recommending, and the committee is recommending, is that we go to fish barriers selectively throughout Gateway and try to isolate our major flowway such that we keep those invasive fish that are eating the littorals or that will be eating littorals, keep them in that main flowway, don't let them go upstream. Right now, Gateway Greens, and it's unbelievable, has only two fish barriers. Our first one is as our flow exits Gateway and goes into Pelican Preserve, we have two twin 84-inch diameter pipes that are preceded by a fish barrier, and we have another one over here at Eagle Point off of pond 114 as it crosses Gateway Boulevard into the main flowway. That's all we have in this entire community. Now, you might consider at Marcus Place in Stony Brook, supposedly when that flowway was built, that channel that we all talk about, that channel that cuts across Gateway Boulevard, there was supposed to be a fish barrier at the end of that as it goes into pond 130. What it turned out to be is a bunch of riprap piled up on each other, and when the riprap gets at a high enough level, the fish go right over the top of it. The good news is, they can only go back to the structure that there is along Gateway Boulevard, the inlet, they can't go really any further. So in effect, Stony Brook already has a separation from the rest of Gateway just by the natural way that Stony Brook is connected into our system. But we do need to really be looking at these fish, how to get rid of them, and how to or how to control them, simply because of the fact, they will eat the littorals. And we also have to worry about them because they are destroying and eroding our banks, because we have a separate fish that's doing that. Nine, if necessary, this is a critical item, "if necessary, to establish satisfactory water quality standards for a pond, PLS may exceed 25% of the pond bank perimeter, provided that the initial and ongoing maintenance of such extralittoral plantings is justified by this GSCDD and that the extralittoral plantings do not cause conflict with residential and commercial users." That's one of those things we're just going to have to come down and we wait and see what happens. Right now, after the testing that we have done since the month of June, we have not had yet any two consecutive poor readings in any of our basins. That's the good news. We had a bad reading on basin five month before last, and I believe that was just simply caused by a huge amount of water and the rainfall that we got that just simply flushed out, and we're getting a lot of bad things happening when we have a first flush anytime in a system like this, that it just rinses all those pollutants right down into the system, and I think that that test results showed that. Going on, the rest of this is pretty much generic, and you have probably seen it through at least 13 or 14 of the versions, a chapter on the nutrients, regulatory standards, GSCDD standards. I'm not going to go into detail on these, because I know you've seen it before and have had them in previous versions. Inspections, one thing on that is that I think, once we get those development orders, we'll be able to read those and see what those call for. I'm really concerned, based on what I have read as to what I believe were actual development orders, when in fact, I don't think they were, because the pond wasn't built the way it shows on the order that we have. So we need to go in and have this outside consultant get these development orders, let's see what they say, not only on this, but what the thought was. Your water management plan that was done by Johnson in 1986 anticipated and called out for all of this to have been done. We have just been negligent in doing it. That pond or that report in 1986 also made it quite clear that the safety factor for the Gateway CDD was pond 132, which was the pond, the 20-acre pond, plus or minus, on the west side of Interstate 75. That was to be the polishing pond for all of the watershed, and I think we need to keep that in mind and make sure that that continues to happen, because that is our safety factor. My only concern is that in a couple of our readings, and as passed on to Bob last week, we have seen evidence by TSI readings that when that water leaves weir two in Pelican Preserve, it's polished off and is pretty dag gone good, and it's in the good category by a pretty good distance. We go over to weir one, which means we picked up the people from Colonial, Botanica, the school, the reading went up. So somebody is discharging something in between us and the discharge point that's causing our TSI to go up. We need to be keeping an eye on that, and if we see that goes to a poor reading or jumps from a good to a fair reading, we might want to be doing some testing off our own property in between, which is outside of our CDD. Surface water pollution, again, a lot of common sense stuff, a lot of cultural practice issues, and I really think that probably the next thing, assuming that this gets approved and we go back to the drawing board as far as work in the committee, within the committee, is that we start working on educating the public. There's emails flying around this place like you cannot believe of horror stories of what's going on. I think a lot of it is education. They don't understand what this is all about, and especially littoral plantings and the need for littorals. I think we need to educate them. We need to talk about cultural practices. I know in Gateway Greens, we've put everybody on notice, including our own landscaper, no more blowing leaves down into the storm sewers, no more throwing the dog poop bags down in the storm sewers and the catch basins. But a lot of people, I'll bring it up to somebody, "I never thought about that." Don't ask me how somebody could think about that, or think that that would be a natural process to take a load of poop bag and throw it right into a catch basin, but it happens all the time. Stormwater pond bank erosion, next paragraph, I think that we have a pretty good handle on that. Danny Tetra Tech presented a report last month, and divided into a three-phase program with roughly 13 ponds and erosion control practices that need to be looked at those first 13 ponds. That's great, but I believe that what we have identified is that along with that facility's planning effort, this littoral issue has got to be looked at, and this is where I'm coming from. Take, for example, let's do pond 110, which I believe is Waterford, about 3,000 feet around that pond, something like 3,000 feet around it. If that has a littoral, or could have a littoral requirement of 25%, that's 750 feet. The last thing I want to do, and that pond does have an erosion problem, the last thing I want to do is see Armamax, 3,000 feet around that pond, at $108 to $120 a lineal foot, to come back the next year, the next week, the next month, whatever, and start cutting it full of holes at the rate of nine holes per square yard. Insanity, absolute insanity. So I think that what needs to happen is that while we're doing these facility plans on the first 13 ponds, we're concurrently looking at what may be, whether it's a DO requirement or whether it's a guesstimate of what could happen in the future, that that pond would have a water quality issue, where would we put the littorals? Where would be the best place to put the littorals? And then look at other products other than the expensive Armamax, knowing that we're going to have to come back in and cut that product and put littorals in it. So that needs to be done, in my opinion, in the facility's planning phase. Top of page seven, "Within this GSCDD Surface Water Management System, pond banks will be maintaining compliance with the permit and development order requirements. Slopes will be stabilized using appropriate control measures." The other thing that I think we need to do, and it concerns me, is that if the development order that I saw, and I know it's not the final development order, but if the development order that I saw for ponds 106, 107 and 108, if you recall, those were the three of our trial ponds, we went in and repaired those to 4-1 slopes. If what I saw was the true development order, called for 6-1. We need to be looking at these development orders before we go back in and start doing this pond work. We need to know what that is, and I think, I've talked to Danny about this and Tetra Tech, and they totally agree, this facility's planning needs to have that kind of information, so when you're doing the engineering, you're doing the slopes, you're doing the calculations, this comes into play. I don't want to see us go out and do a lot of repairs and then have somebody come back in after it's done and say, "Well, you know, that looks all fine and well." Doesn't meet the DO, doesn't meet the development order. Now, maybe perhaps, getting with Lee County, they'll differentiate between the 4-1 and 6-1, or suggest that, "Hey, guys, you get 4-1, we're happy," even if it says 6-1, and that might solve that problem. But I want to make sure that it's done correctly. Easements, the only thing that I can see on easements, and we've talked about it, and a lot of people around here are not aware of it, but if they look at their own lot description, they'll see easements on it, but if you've got a storm sewer inlet in the front of your house, and you've got a pond behind your house, it doesn't go by sky hooks and a pipe back to the lake. It's underground between your two houses, and there's a seven-and-a-half foot on both sides of the property to create a 15-foot easement through that area. Bob's already doing it over Pelican Preserve, and the reason I bring this up is one of the things that we're going to be talking about, and I think we're going to be doing in the future, is aeration. I really believe we're going to be doing aeration. Well, aeration's got two components to it. One, that's getting the electrical to the blower, and then getting the air or the blown air out to the diffusers in the lake. That requires probably some underground directional boring to run from the transformer or from the handholds that Electrical FPL has over to the point of where you're going to place these. The typical place to put them would be to place those on the utility easement that you already have, the drainage easement. I was concerned about that, but Bob took care of my concerns on that, showing me one over at Pelican Preserve, and it was fantastic. The thing is probably quieter than the noise I hear off my backyard from the golf course. So it was unbelievable. But it's going to require a selling job. Keeping in mind that about the only place we have to put these, unless we want to go back, and Tony wants to have fun with all the meetings with neighbors trying to get them and grant easements, I don't think I want to even go down that road. Life's too short for that. We're going to have to utilize that, so we're going to have to have an educational process, which means, again, in the facility's plan, we need to be identifying all of those easements that we can use for the possibility of locating those blowers for the aeration system. Page nine, pretty much go over the Gateway ponds, and there is a, should be an omission there, "and wetlands." This is not an "and wetlands" document, it's Gateway ponds. Apologize for that. Pond water quality monitoring, I show the ponds that we're doing, I show the tests that we're doing right now with Lee County Hyacinth Control, talk about the Tropic State Index and the fact that we're using that and their poor reading as the basis of going on. At the bottom of page nine, we indicate that if you have those successive poor readings, what happens and what would be the things that we want to look at, and then I've got a whole bunch of listing of cultural practices that I really believe that we need to somehow get out on the street to everybody in Gateway and Pelican Preserve. Again, they're so far ahead of us over there with educating their people, we got to catch up. Page 10 is a breakdown of the flowways and all of the ponds and/or features that are influenced to that flowway segment. Basin one, which is the 75, we have our lake 132, then we have Colonial Country Club, Botanical Lakes, that Treeline Elementary School that go into. Then you go up into flowway two into Pelican Preserve, all those lakes and ponds go into Pelican Preserve's flowway two. Flowway three, that's two components, Pelican Preserve has those ponds in it. Now, I'm basing this on the last plans that I had from WCI back when we were doing this three, four, five years ago. If they changed any of the piping network, there is, I suppose, a possibility that maybe one of those ponds, 41, 439 or 42, could go around and go into a different basin. Don't know about that, so we need to check. Part of flowway three is in Gateway, and that's ponds 130, 127, 63 and 68. Pond four, which is at Cypress, or basin four, which is at Cypress Links, has major segments at 126, 122 and 16, and then basin five, which is pond 109 at Gateway Greens, which is the weir, has those major and minor segments. Then basin six, the one Bob alluded to, that goes the northern route around into Colonial, is identified, and it's got those ponds identified right there. Next page, page 11, we go into residence maintenance tasks, engineering maintenance tasks and aquatic maintenance tasks, and this is probably one of the places where I would say that this has yet a work in progress. I have taken several contracts and talked to quite a few communities around here and have gotten access to their pond standards and tried to pull out of theirs the best that we want to include in ours. But Scott has gone out and started the process of trying to do pre-qualification of these vendors by asking them to submit to us copies of their contracts and sample contract documents relative to both aquatic maintenance and littoral maintenance. Then what I would like to do is sit down with our group, possibly Bob's group too, if they're interested, and go through and start gleaning out of each of these contracts, those components in that contract that we would like to have here in Gateway, to see that we have those covered. Create then a new specification, which would then come back to Scott and his staff, check it all out, come before the board, get your approval, then and only then, I think, we're ready to go out and start talking about taking bids for aquatic services. This has got to happen quickly, because right now, as I read it and as I see it, and I took some pictures and brought over, and the Silver Lakes people sent me some pictures that I'll send around while I'm talking. This issue isn't going to stop. We've got an issue, we'll have one of my pictures, we have an issue here in Gateway that these littorals are simply not being maintained, and I'll pass these around. I had about 12 other pictures that came from the country club, and in fact, the country club asked me today, "Please get out and maintain these littorals right outside the main grill room, the new grill room." Our pond over there has basically just come in. The littorals now are crossing over the pond. We've got Thalia that's six, eight feet high, and it's ugly. It's immensely ugly. It's all over the community. So we need to So we need to develop these standards. I'm of the opinion that the current contract you have does not have a proviso in it to do that as a part of the contract. You can order them to do it, or you can request them to do it, but I believe it's a change order item. And the last thing that we want to do is be doing a lot of change order work. I'd much rather have that publicly bid, and then deal with contractors and see what is the best contract value for maintenance in Gateway. Page twelve gets into unwanted species, I think a lot of that's common sense stuff. Page thirteen, table commonly found plants in Gateway ponds, we divided into desirable plants and nuisance exotic plants, and as you can see, one of the ones that we have put, while it may be a littoral, we have put Thalia over into the nuisance exotic for one reason, it is so difficult to maintain. It grows like crazy, and it's, to me, it looks like a, a high maintenance item. Table two, again, has to do with wetlands, and really probably not pertinent at this point in time. Last thing is Gateway ponds and wetlands resources, that was in the original report that the committees, prior to our committee being created, did, and Exhibit A is where we will have that spreadsheet that will show our fifty-nine ponds and what the development orders say on each of those. I've got a series of conclusions, I don't think Tony's going to let me say recommendations, I have a series of conclusions relative to where we're at, and what we have come up with at this point in time. The first conclusion is, I believe, we need to go back to the March ninth, fifth meeting, and rescind the motion made regarding the one-hundred percent littorals, and have a clarification of that, and hopefully, following what this pond standards committee and group have put together regarding littorals. Second, approve the littoral pond standards. Three, proceed with the preparation of the facility's plan on those thirteen Phase One ponds, which we've already basically done, but throw in the deal, I believe you need to be doing the littorals, whether you plant the littorals as a part of the SRF program or not. I think you need to study them to make sure that we're not putting in really expensive erosion control techniques that we're later going to be coming back and cutting to install, or possibly installing littorals. Next item, authorize the preparation of the bathometric studies and the soundies on the thirteen Phase One ponds, so that when we're out doing the work in those ponds concurrently with the erosion, if we're going to be putting in aeration facilities, we need to be contacting FPL, figuring out where the power's coming from. The last thing you want to do into these communities is to go in there, do what we've done on one oh six, seven, and eight, which was a fiasco, and I heard about it every day, of is this project going to finish in our lifetime? Let's get in, get the stuff that needs to be done. Now, maybe we can kick the littorals down the road at a later time. Again, the planning of the littorals is not the major earth-moving, rock hauling process that we have to do the erosion control and the digging that would possibly have to be done with the installation of aeration, and God forbid, if we have to go in and dredge, if we have to dredge any of these, that would be a, a fiasco. And then the last recommendation would be to revise all the SRF documents to facilitate the above items, which at this point in time, we're not recommending that you do the littoral plantings, but certainly do the littoral research as to what impact it might have on the ponds on following this recommendation, which at this point in time is, is twenty-five percent. Be more than happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you.
First, probably have Bob, if Bob wants to comment on anything from Pelican Preserve's side.
No, we're in line with what they're looking for.
Thank, thank you very much, Ed. I think it's pretty unreasonable to expect that this board is going to pass approve or whatever this document tonight. There's just too much in it. What I would, what I would like to suggest is that we have two weeks to mull it over, get our questions, hopefully get our questions to Ed, you know, one-on-one, so that we can come back in two weeks with a reasonable number of questions that we have to act on as a, as a board as a whole. But from what I've seen here and what I've heard, I, I think we'll probably be here till midnight, trying to answer all of the questions that this thing has brought forth.
Well, I think the, the big thing is, is that this, this comes down to really the issue of the hundred percent versus twenty-five percent. That, that in and of itself is the, the basis, the foundation of this pond maintenance standard. And if we're going to stick at the hundred percent level, then there's other ramifications that I think are going to have to be brought before the board, and those are the financial ramifications. You're talking about a lot of money if you're going to a hundred percent littorals. Not only planting costs, you're talking about maintenance costs, and we've done some calculations on that, and have those ready also, and I'd be more than happy to share those with the board, because that is going to play a major portion in this, especially, especially if you're not going to use SRF funding for littorals. And using SRF funding for littorals with a twenty-year bond on a item that has a life expectancy of three, four, or five years, perhaps, just doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
That's not a loss.
Which means we go back to things, talking about assessments, and at the dollar values that we're talking about in here, and two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand lineal feet, at four to five dollars a foot, you get to big numbers, and that's not even counting the maintenance of them, not even counting the maintenance. So if you're going to be considering that, or if that is an issue, I'd be more than happy to share what we've come up with as far as costs and ramifications of cost on the issue of a hundred versus twenty-five percent.
Did you have something, Bob?
Only to further what you were saying, you're not going to go over this document line by line, but it certainly is a topic that merits a lot of attention. You might suggest have a separate meeting that our group, then your group can come to, field of questions. This thing took us eight, nine months to do, so, you know, why talk about a specific part of it today? Pull it over for a couple of weeks, like you said, whenever you want to have us back, we can all come back and have a roundtable.
Two things, roundtable's a good idea, I, I think a workshop setting where you can just set time aside and sit down and come up with something, just for this is a, is a good idea. But you really don't have a standard for a hundred percent littorals right now. You have no standard, other than what the DO or ERP, or whichever document regulates that. You had a hundred percent on three lakes, that was a decision of the board, but you have no hundred percent standard right now.
Indeed.
Yes.
And you've gone back and looked at the, you've gone back and looked at the resolutions that the board adopted.
I can read you the motion.
What's that?
I can read you the motion if you'd like, it's from March fifth, and it says, one-hundred percent littorals, planning was recommended, Ms. Gill moves and seconded by Ms. Feinberg to go forward planting littorals at one-hundred percent as indicated in the document included, which is this table in the meeting book under item five C, and recommended by staff for lakes one oh four, one oh six, one oh seven, one oh eight, and eighty-seven. So I've looked at subsequent meeting minutes, and there are no recommendations for one-hundred percent, so that is something that needs to be addressed.
Okay. So then there is not a one-hundred percent littoral basis there right now?
No, but it needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
We, we also have a situation that occurred a couple of weeks ago. I'm, I'm still kind of puzzled. We have a person that's on our staff, we have another person that's on Severn Trent's staff, these are our staff people that are supposed to be managing our lakes and wetlands. Am I not correct on that, or am I really way off? Having said that, this committee is an advisory committee, and there seemed to be, with at least one of our staff people, regarding this thing that happened at Silver Lakes, that they didn't really get to manage this situation over there, somebody else got involved in managing.
I don't know what you're referring to, Gary.
Maybe the next meeting, we ought to bring Elle in here, and let Elle describe what she went through.
I, you really think that's part?
Well, then, then Chairman, I'd like you to go and talk with her.
I, I think the issue is that he's trying to allude to, is, is that there was a lot of discussion, and that was part of the, the things that we did in our ponds committee with Elle and with Molly, having discussions about littorals in ponds to where there was not a, a DO requirement. Silver Lakes was one, and we had several representatives of Silver Lakes on our committee, and we're very emphatic about that. In fact, there was even discussion of litigation by the HOA or the POA involved there to honor the development order. I indicated to them, I was concerned about where this was going, and I thought that what we ought to do is check and see what the county had to say. So I drafted a letter and contacted the county, well, first called them, and then drafted a letter afterwards to make sure that I was correct. Lee County's position is on littorals and development orders, is since littorals are not a prohibited item, unlike Thalia, or Hydrella, or algae, or some of the other invasive or nuisance exotic plants, they are not going to intervene in any issue. Simply put, they are not going to intervene, and I have that back from Lee County.
And what about South Florida Water Management?
I'm sorry, South Florida Water Management District could care less about littorals. They have no, 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 nothing in the game on littorals.
So what you're saying is we're on our own?
You guys make the call. I think, and as we indicated in there, if we have a pond that has littorals, and there is no DO requirement for littorals, the people in that community, that people in that commercial community, POA, can come to this board, like any resident can come to this board, and ask for you to, to take action. One of those actions may be to remove those littorals. You guys can go for that, you get your choice. The issue is, if you're going to leave them, the only thing that we as a committee, and we put into the pond standards, is by God, maintain them, maintain them.
Hold on, Ed. Yes, sure. I'd like to wrap this.
Yes, I want to, I want to wrap it up, too.
I'm talking, you need to.
I'd like to build on what you're saying, Cal. I think workshop is a good idea, this is a big subject, and, and I welcome the idea of a workshop. I would also, would like to see on the front page here, and we've got a bunch, we've got a number of entities who support this document, who have all been part and past lobby, Tetra Tech is missing. I need to be, I'd like to know if you, either now or in a couple of weeks' time, would be prepared to put Tetra Tech's name to this as well, Danny?
Only if I have to.
It's important to me, because we're all, we're all part of the same family here, and I want to know that you're behind this.
Yes, it, it needs to go through workshopping, but I think we're, you know, we're, we're to that. I think for the most, it, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a group effort, I've been involved, so yes, we would like to be, our, our name on there. I will say that, as individuals, I don't know if any one person will agree with everything that's in there.
No, you never got that.
But that's okay, it's because the decisions that have made that have come of this have been from the group as a whole.
Okay, the erosion section, I'm sure, is a big deal for you, and I want to make sure that you're okay with the way it's worded. That will come up in the workshop.
Well, I think the bigger section for Danny is to make sure that they recognize that we have littoral needs, there's no doubt about that, nobody's arguing that. The issue is, I just, as a resident, and I can do the math pretty easy, so I take that hundred and four thousand feet multiplied times a hundred and some dollars a foot, I get to ten million dollars fast.
That's a big number.
Using Armamax, and I think there's other products that can be used that would be compatible with installation of littorals.
You, you've made your point, gentlemen, we've heard enough about this for tonight.
I'd like to ask Ed one thing, and that is, you rattled off a list of your ideas or recommendations, or whatever you want to call them, can you send those to each of us so we have those?
Sure can.
Yes, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, board members, we're on to the consent agenda. Approval of the October first fifteen minutes and truck purchase. Either one of those items need additional conversation?
The only question I had is to talk about Mr. Tarsha, is it? Being, the Stony Brook Minutes?
Can you give me a page, please?
I'm trying to find it, but, hang in there, I'm trying. It talked about the removal of a Stony Brook. It's like Stony Brook Minutes. Ah, yes, we're starting on page fifteen, that's where I'm first picking up on the minutes.
Joe DePrima?
Where, oh.
Joe DePrima, page fifteen, isn't that?
Yeah, I guess that was, Joe DePrima stopped by the office, verbally told Diane Collins he was resigning, and it talks about the fact that Joe DePrima was not at a number of, how many meetings has Mr. DePrima missed?
I don't, you're looking, you're going back to what was underneath the Stony Brook?
Right.
You're talking about what was underneath the pathway, that wasn't.
This is something, yeah.
This isn't part of the consent agenda, right?
Okay, I just wondered why he.
Okay, we have two items, approval of the October first fifteen minutes and a truck purchase, may I have a motion?
Truck purchase.
I want, I've got five B, I'd like to talk about five B.
Yep.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Scott, Scott, may I speak with your second, please?
You would.
Scott, I had a, I had a bit of an issue generally with this truck, but I'm supporting it, as you know, from the, from the vote, and I didn't realize at the time the recreation manager was hired, that a truck came with it, but that seems to be the case. And then you made a case, and as you were requested, you made a justification for this F-150, and then the board supported you, and now, if I, I, I'll have to look at the, what it actually says in the five B here, to remind myself.
Page forty-eight.
I think you're saying something like, there aren't any left, and you now want a van, is that what we're doing?
Trying to stay within the price, the budget.
Understood, but I was talking about the need, it just, it doesn't seem that, I mean, obviously, you would prefer a truck, otherwise you want to pass one, is that true?
Well, initially, yes. Now that the, there's no truck in that price range available, after additional discussion and seeing, thinking outside the box, if you will, looking at a van for this as a service vehicle, we feel it'll, it'll meet all the needs, we'll be able to keep the tools in it in a secure location, we'll be able to keep some of the product and things, we won't have to transfer it out of the bed of a pickup truck, be able to keep it in the van, caulk in, paint, those kinds of things. So I believe it, it's probably a better fit.
Why won't we need a toolbox?
Excuse me, Gary, I just want you to finish my point, that's okay. Scott, I just want to make sure they're understood what your real reason is for going to a van. You're stating it's because they're not available, but I, I have friends in, in Galloway's, and they've got over a hundred.
Oh, absolutely, they have hundreds of trucks.
But you're stating that there are only two thousand and sixteen, and they're not, they're two thou, they've got a whole load of them in two thousand and fifteen, as I checked.
They are, but not, not at this price, is what I've been told.
Okay, rather than getting into a, a kind of gotcha thing, I, I, I'm trying to get to the real reason, you want to change to a van because you've rethought the need, rather than it's to do with there are no trucks left.
No, initially, it was because there are no trucks left.
Okay, so in that, what you're saying now, regardless of whether there's trucks left or not, you'd prefer a van?
I, I do, I really think a van is a, is a better choice for, for utilization for the facilities department.
Okay, that's, that's one of the real, you can always get a truck, look hard enough about it, and work, I've just bought a new car, and I'm, there's, I, I'm a really good negotiator, and I'm sure you can get them down to the price if you try, you pick it up from Seabreeze, you can get a truck, but that's not the reason why you want a van.
Who's going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote five zero, thank you very much. Staff reports, District Council, Timberwood Preserve update, da-da-da-da-da.
Yes, sir, and we'll have some, as an update, we'll have a, adjusted recommendation. Since the time of, as you can see from the agenda packet, based upon the actions last board meeting, I filed a petition for extension of time to South Florida Water Management District to file a formal petition to challenge the letter modification for Timberwood Reserve. So the formal petition to challenge the permit doesn't need to be filed until November thirteenth, that was the timeframe that was extended by order, that was in your agenda packet. Since the date of the last board meeting, district staff- district staff and engineers have been working with WCI and with their engineers on this issue. And a couple of developments have occurred. I believe the board has received a letter from Paul Erhardt, where WCI, where he has advised that WCI is going to be withdrawing their administrative amendment as to the lot coverage, that increased it from 40 to 45% in Timberwood Preserve. I believe you all have a copy of that letter. And that is a very positive step. Additionally, Danny and Nelson Tyler are here to answer any questions from a technical perspective. The, Danny and/or Tyler met with the engineers for WCI this week and discussed the modeling and discussed the revisions. Revised submittals were provided, as I understand it, to the district. And the engineers, Tetra Tech has reviewed it. We have, and has prepared a revised memorandum of November 5th, 2015, that was finalized today, November 5th. And it's five pages in length. And I will paraphrase, and then Danny and Tyler can speak for themselves if they wish. And we also have David Caldwell from WCI present. I asked the attorney, Christine Green, and Vivian Hastings from WCI to have a representative from WCI with the authorization to make commitments and stipulations present at today's board meeting. And to hope that at the end of the day, if the board so chooses, the board could approve a revised revision and modification to the prior GS-CCD approval of development order issued, I think, last year for Timberwood Preserve, based upon the recent submittals by Holmontez. Contingent upon a couple of items. One would be, WCI would pay all of the district's fees that were incurred from the attorney's fees and engineering fees incurred in processing this modification, including the fees associated with the extension request to South Florida Water Management District. And that the WCI would also provide additional bonding to account for the additional construction necessitated by the modifications under this procedure. And you've seen, and in front of you, you have, as I said, the Tetra Tech memorandum where references various comments made by Tetra Tech on October 21st, 2015, and responses by Holmontez, the developers, engineers on November 2nd, 2015, and the responses that were accepted by Tetra Tech and the recommendation for approval. David Caldwell will speak, as I understand, on behalf of WCI on the issues with regards to additional bonding. I believe David will tell you that no additional bond needs to be provided because the original bond amount in favor of GS-CCD. And that's the key. We don't care about bonds in favor of Lee County. It's purely in favor of GS-CCD. David told me earlier this evening that the original bond issued in favor of GS-CCD included the cost of constructing the roadway, which is private. So it might just need to, so there's a large dollar amount that's larger than what is needed. So the dollar amount may not need to be changed. Just make sure we cover all of the improvements in that, in that bond. So I don't know if Danny, if the board wishes to hear from Danny or Tyler, but right now, I believe the staff recommendation, unless I get arrows tossed at me by anybody else, is that the board is...
Accept the recommendation for Danny and Tyler.
Yeah, accept the recommendation. Approve the modified submittal. Approve modifications to the previous GS-CCD approval for Timberwood Preserve. And contingent upon WCI paying the attorney's fees and engineering fees. And also contingent upon the satisfactory bonding. And then as a result, no longer pursue a petition challenge to, you know, to South Florida Water Management District.
Okay. Danny, would you stand at the podium and confirm that everything you've heard is in fact your belief?
For the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech. Absolutely. And I'll just say, this has been a very coordinated and positive group effort between staff, consultants, as well as WCI. And a lot has been accomplished over the last week alone. So we're, you know, very comfortable with what has been presented, and we're fully recommending moving forward with this.
Thank you. Mr. Caldwell, do you have a desire to come to the podium?
Can I pass an opportunity?
I didn't mean to awaken you. Excuse me.
No, I'm... Mr. Chairman, initial condition, just to make sure, is that WCI does continue to pursue withdrawing that administrative amendment that they said they would. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Dave Caldwell, WCI, for the record. Yes, I have been authorized by the corporation to, to indicate to the board and tell the board that we will comply with what Tony just said. We'll pay the expenses related to your staff and consultants. We were, are in...
An attorney. An attorney.
He's one of your consultants, in my view. But yes, attorney, if you want the specific word. And yes, we are in, already in the process of an administrative amendment. We're rescinding that with the county. And we'll adjust the bond amount to meet the needs of the district after it's reviewed by staff. Is there anything else we're supposed to commit to and promise?
We have another list under the table here. But that's, that's fine.
I heard pizza party.
For staff.
Tony, is there, is...
I'm sorry. Those are from my perspective. No, I don't believe, I think staff has articulated all the... Danny's done Tetra Tech's report that Danny and Tyler did an outstanding job anticipating those.
And like, I just would also say, we're very appreciative of staff and your consultants working with us. We're certainly a mistake on our part that we got to where we are today, but nevertheless, we always thought we were trying to work through as a cooperative effort to solve this problem. We just got a couple of missteps.
Please.
May I, thank you. May I speak to you in just layman's terms? I'm not in your league when it comes to engineering stuff. But here's the way I understand what has occurred, and I just would like you to tell me whether I'm, I'm correct. The idea, the original permit was for 40% impervious surface at Timberwood. And then Holmontez, on your behalf, asked South Florida Water Management for an increase to 45%. Is that correct, roughly?
I... No.
No. What, what's that?
No.
Please help me out. I'm just trying to understand in summary terms what's going on here.
The... Let, let the... The, it is an apples and oranges issue, and it got all blended together into a smoothie. The administrative amendment deals with lot coverage. It's not the exact same 40% that is your permit criteria manual. Those are two distinct, separate numbers. They are measured or quantified in different ways. It was interpreted in such a way that we were trying to increase our impervious surface. That wasn't the intent, and it never was. It was to deal with some other issue we believe the county had with what we'd call a house footprint on a lot, lot coverage. It may sound like an impervious surface issue, but they're two different calculations. We are rescinding the administrative amendment because we don't, in fact, need it. We thought it was a, something we would need. As we analyzed the actual community and the way we're building out there, it wasn't necessary. That's why we have no problem with rescinding it. As to the Holmontez and the drainage issue, the entire subdivision was designed in accordance with the district's manual standard for 40% impervious. The actual entire community, all the lakes, roads, lots, whatever, when you add it up, are below 40% impervious. So we were, from the original design to what we are today, is below 40%. The whole problem of, the technical problem we were running into is we were reliant, far too reliant on our drainage outfall of passing sheet flow through a wetland area. And the wetland area, of course, is a natural terrain, and it, the water backed up on us during the...
Thank you. So the last question. So the way I understand it now, Holmontez applied for this permit variation, whatever it was, to South Florida. And we didn't know about it, we, as a district, until Tetra Tech found out. Is that what happened?
No.
How did we, how did we find out about it?
When, when we realized we had a drainage, first, the site was fully permitted originally. That's what we built out there. The rain season came. The rainy season created an obvious problem because of the sheet flow of water through the wetland area was too slow. It causes the water to back up in the system. And at the low points in the system, the water started to stack up. One of the low points is by all the inlets, by the road basins, and we had standing water in the road basins. So the solution was to find an alternate way around. At that moment, when we realized we had a, a physical problem in the property, this was back in August, Holmontez and our land development team contacted the district, Scott and his team. We contacted Tetra Tech. We contacted South Florida. We contacted the county, all to come up with a solution because we had to have unanimity from all parties as to how to deal with it. And we knew we had to do, first, talking it through with all the parties. What can we do? What would you accept? That kind of thing. From that perspective, if we thought we had unanimity on all the regulatory parties, including the district, then it was up to Holmontez to design something. And I may have the date for it, but I think it's early September. September 9th, we submitted plans to the district, and on the 11th, submitted the same plan to South Florida. Now, your rules require actually that we're not supposed to submit to South Florida until we've completed the permitting at your level and then proceed. But because we sort of had an emergency, Holmontez took it upon themselves to file, you know, shotgun.
That's the only real reason for my question was that it seemed to me from the preamble from last week, that last meeting and this meeting and the meeting book text is that you'd gone to South Florida Water Management and asked for, and we didn't know about it until later.
No, actually, you had the plans, you had them three or four days before South Florida did.
I'm just trying to avoid...
It just took longer, you know.
My question is...
Tetra Tech and your staff wasn't happy with, they wanted more analysis than South Florida did.
Understood. I just want to make sure if this, going forward, if, because we're the permutee of record, of course, to manage this system here.
Yeah.
So we need to know if ever a permit like that is being requested or a change to, right? And I, I would have thought we naturally would know.
Well, actually, you were, not at your level, but your team back here, they knew we were working on it, but they, they legitimately had a problem with us going to South Florida before you had completed your review.
Okay, thank you very much, David. What do you need from us?
I would say the board approved a modification to the Timberwood Preserve approval previously issued by Gateway Services Community Development District. Contingent upon WCI paying, the conditions would be WCI paying the district, reversing the district for attorney's fees and engineering fees associated with the review of this matter. Also contingent, another condition being an adjustment to the performance bond to ensure that the additional facilities required by this modification, that would be acquired by the district.
You have this all written out for us, right?
I will, I will put it in writing, but that's the...
You expect us to do it today?
Yes, sir. We'd ask for, and also not, not file a petition with South Florida Water Management.
If I can get a motion in a second. I have a motion. Do I have a second? All right, you'll, you'll do the wording and get it to the man.
Work with all the staff and the manager. Absolutely, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Five, zero. Thank you very much. What's your next item?
Nothing further. Well, let's see. No, sir. Oh, that's all three are the same.
Okay. Are you finished with this?
Yes, sir. Unless we get the revised agreement with Ramba, I'm not sure if that's under me or under just general discussion.
I do want to talk to you about Ramba for a second when we get to it.
I think Ramba would be next, then. Yet, I think you have the addendum in front of you, the proposed letter agreement and the addendum.
I saw it from...
I have an extra copy of the addendum.
Is this, is this a recommendation from you?
Yes, sir. A recommendation to, that the chairman be authorized to sign the representation letter with Ramba Consulting Group in the form as being provided, to be provided with the addendum as indicated.
And, and, and why are you recommending it?
So they've added the issue with regards to that they will use the best efforts to put you, which means the district, in your interest, in the best possible position to succeed. The addendum will provide, provides that they'll provide written monthly reports. It also provides that if requested by the district, Ramba will assist the district from time to time with the AGO requests and in processing amendments to Chapter 194 statutes, and that the district has the right to unilaterally terminate the agreement after July 1st of 2016.
And I've seen, I've seen, excuse me, a signature on the Ramba line of this dated November 2nd, which indicates to me that they've agreed to all of this.
Yes, sir.
With no increase in compensation. Is that so?
That's absolutely correct. Yes, sir.
May I have a motion for approval?
I move.
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Vote. Five, zero.
I would like to say this on the Ramba subject, Mr. Chairman. They, what concerns, what should concern us all is, is the deadline to get, for, for Ramba's people, Sue Mullins, if you remember her on the last conference call. Talked to her today. It's really quite important that to meet the 2016 legislative session, which begins January 12th. They need to get some forms filled in, which is really local, local funding request forms. And to do that, we need to nominate somebody here. And my suggestion would be, would be Danny, coupled with perhaps Scott. And it's up for you to, Cal, to weigh in on this. We need to identify who's accountable to work with the Ramba Group because he needs to work pretty hard between now and November 15th, which is in 10 days' time, to fill these forms in because it needs a member, which is going to be Beniquista or Caldwell. He needs one of those two members to sign on, and certain, and various chairman of budget committees to get a hold of what we're trying to do here, which is this, the same, the same facilities plan detail that Danny's working on for the SRF loan. That kind of is all, a summary of that's all that's needed. So we need to nominate, I think, somebody who's going to work with the Ramba Group to get this done in the next 10 days.
Danny, are you willing to take that nomination?
I'm willing to nominate Tyler.
Tyler, are you willing to accept that nomination?
I don't believe that I have a choice, but yes, I am willing to accept that. Yes, sir.
I think that's great because we need to know who's accountable here to work with, with Ramba and get this thing in in 10 days' time. Otherwise, we've missed, we've missed a full year.
Who's going to, who is going to tell Ramba who that Tyler is our nominee?
I will, if you wish. Or you can, it's up to you.
You've handled that up to this point.
I'll do it.
And Mr. Chairman, I would suggest, just on a go-forward basis, if it's appropriate for the board to designate one of the board members as a liaison with the Ramba Group during the course of their lobbying or consulting work. Because there's some continuity or...
Anybody want to do that? Are you willing to do that, too?
Yeah, of course I am. No problem.
All right. Do you want, do you think we need a motion?
No, sir. I think consensus is fine.